By 17th, 23, regular meeting of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Brooks Matthews to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
All rise. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity we have to meet together tonight to discuss the issues of our county. We thank you for all in attendance. We pray that you'll be with us tonight during this meeting that you would help all of our decisions to be edifying to you and beneficial for our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Start things off with consideration of additions and deletions to the published agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the agenda as published.
Take it. The motion, second, to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Very unanimously. Go here, motion on the consent agenda.
I'm so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion of approval for the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very unanimously as well, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
All right. Item five, Mr. Snow, if you would. Do the oath of office for Ms. Christine Wallace.
Christine, before you take your oath this evening, would you like to introduce any family members or any other friends that are here to support you? I see several here.
Yes, I have my parents right here, some neighbors, my friends, past coworkers, and then the staff from the office is here to support me. So I'm very thankful for each one of them, this past year that we've worked together.
This is Jason, your husband, of course.
Yes. I'm sorry, I forgot what I said. I was like, this guy, he kind of shows up, yes. So this is my husband and then my son Luke, so I guess.
Son Luke, we call him Cool Hand Luke. He's going to hold the Bible. If you put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Your husband told me it's very simple. It's just like when you got married, you just say adieu twice.
Exactly.
Christine L. Wallace, do you solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith?
I do.
Do you further solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of tax administrator to include the duties of tax collector and tax assessor of Harnett County, North Carolina, and that you will not allow your actions as tax administrator to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations. Stay right here.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I will submit this oath of office to our clerk to notarize, also showing that her four-year term will expire on July 19, 2027.
Thanks, sir. That, we will move on to item number six, consider an amendment to the tax administrator contract.
Yes, sir, I'll cover that. In discussion with our new tax administrator, she has made a request that the contract be amended, that instead of paying her a $50 stipend for the use of her own cellphone, to have a county provide it. The cost of the county phone is about $45 per month, so a little bit of savings, but the key is, is that that keeps the business separate, personal and business, and I do that as well. So that's a choice that each individual that needs to be reached by cellphone has the option of choosing, and she'd like to make that change from the original contract.
You need a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
Move to amend the contract, or so managers.
Thank you.
A motion, and the second, in order to amend the tax administrator's contract. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Very unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
And at this time, I will now open the floor for public comment. Public comment period will consist of 30 minutes. Each presenter will have three minutes to speak. I have three signed up today. Mr. Wes Newell, first. Pardon me if I butchered that name, sir.
So I represent landowners that surround Buddy Barefoot Road in southwest Harnett County and Wes Newell, 3600 Glenwood Avenue, Raleigh, North Carolina. And the road's been abandoned since 2018, and we had talked to DOT about it since that time, so it's been over five years. And after consulting with them, they said, yes, you know, we agree that the road should be privatized. It hasn't been maintained, there's been garbage dumping, trespassing, the roads have been blocked. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that area. But DOT agreed with that and said we would need to present it to the county commissioners. And so I would just like to request that there be a motion to privatize Buddy Barefoot Road. The intent of that project is to, there's about 1,000 acres on both sides, is to do an environmental restoration project and then convert it to a conservation area and park. The vision that we have is something like Carver's Creek State Park. So that would be an entrance to the park, and so that, that road would be effectively gated and managed by the property on Eastern Island. There's about 1,000 acres that's split by that road. The, right now, there, and I sent a document, a PDF, that you probably received not too long ago, that shows some photos of the garbage dumping and some of the activities going on. The road's blocked, it's completely washed out. So that's sort of the plan for the future, so I just wanted to get it out there. I understand you may be doing something in August as well, based on what DOT told us, that you'll be, you know, looking at that in further detail, but I just wanted to explain what our goal is for that road and there's with the landowners.
Thank you very much, sir. And Ms. Elizabeth Longman.
Hope everyone is doing great. I've just come before you guys. I had one thing in mind, but then last night, we were hit with the whopper of the job description for the new staff attorney position. I don't think any of you have read it. In fact, I'm almost 100,000% sure Mr. Bill Morris has not read that job description, because if he had, he would have come and said, this is borderline against the law. I do not like that sheriff. I do not like Wayne Coats. Everybody knows, every day I come here and say for the betterment of Harnett County, Mr. Coats needs to go. You cannot create a pseudo sheriff in the attorney's department. You cannot. The law says if you are dissatisfied with the sheriff as county commissioners, you remove him. You do not create someone who answers to Chris Appel to go and sit in the sheriff's department to oversee policies, to oversee warrants being served, to oversee, to be able to answer even after hours, I think the job description says, even after hours. You cannot do that. You cannot. You guys, if you are not satisfied with the way the sheriff is performing, I think I've been very clear, as the path to help that man exit his position, it's a vote. It's a vote or a superior court situation. You cannot now go and create a second sheriff who is an attorney, which is against North Carolina general statutes, to now come and answer to Chris Appel. That is not legal. You guys have stuck your foot in it. We all understand Sheriff Coats went on WRL and described how drug-infested the jail is, a fact you already know because I made you well aware of it. He described how they'll come with the drones and the fences and everything else. He did it, not me. He told the world how drug-infested Harnett County jail is, and your response is to create another sheriff who is an attorney, which is against NCGS, to come and answer to Chris Appel? Wow, guys, well done.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Alan Longman.
Alan Longman, 234 Hamilton Road in Barn Level. Reason for my talk is about the same basic thing. I don't understand how you want to waste the money on a position to tell the sheriff what he's supposed to already know. He's supposed to know the law. He doesn't need so much. He has access to people here, and now that's supposed to, he's supposed to sit down and get advice from? Now you need an overseer because he doesn't have the competency to ask the right questions to the county's law office to find out what the legal way is to do the things that he's doing? You have to have an oversight? I think this breeds corruption. I believe it's an added expense to the county because the sheriff does not do his job and has to be looked at for every legal thing that he does. He has access to lawyers. I think it's a conflict of interest also, that when you have all these bad things happening in the county directed at the sheriff's office, that you have a legal expert come in there and turn around and give him ideas of what he's supposed to do, and once he comes in, doesn't he have to tell all the illegal stuff that's going on that he uncovers? If he does not, does he serve the county really, or does he serve the sheriff? At what point is there oversight? At what point are the people need to be representative? If he needs counsel, he should be able to pay for it himself and the county reimburse him, but not use anyone from the county that may have the best interests of the county be different than that of the sheriff. I believe that's breaking the bar law of ethics by having that position, and it will be challenged. I don't want that position. I want the people to sit down and look at what's going on in the sheriff's department. If it needs to be looked at, it needs to be looked at. Suzanne Matthews needs to call in somebody to look at what's going on illegally and have an investigation. We do know that he may not even be sheriff. He did not qualify when he went in as a candidate. He did not qualify because the papers that he was necessary for him to run for sheriff don't have a timestamp on it. Everyone else does. It came in after the deadline, and do not believe he's a sheriff, and that needs to be investigated. That's fraud. So we don't need a lawyer to come in here and say, hey, look, let's get your act together. We need investigations to find out what the heck is going on in that office. There's a lot of worse things that happened that haven't even come out yet. They will soon. And the point is, it's a Band-Aid. You need to really sit down, investigate this guy, and end all these illegal things that have been going on for years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I will now close the floor for public comment, and we will move on to item number eight, discuss and consider requests from General Services Harnett, or Hartz System, to approve NC DOT Travelers Aid. Mr. Barry Glavens, good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Glad to be back. So I want to give a little background on where we left it off at the work sessions, maybe I can better describe what this is. Also, I've asked Mr. Polinski to come up and tell you guys how his department will ask you to service the grant. So let me give you a little background. So last year in December, the board considered and approved our application to apply for fiscal year '24, which we're in now, Travelers Aid program. So we are seeking, what we're now seeking is the approval of the agreement to fund the project. Hartz is the project lead agency, and the reason why we're the lead agency is because we receive 5311 funds, and so we have to apply. So we're taking the position of the lead agency and mostly for reimbursement back to the county, the monies we spend. So Travelers Aid's overall purpose is to provide interstate bus or train tickets for disadvantaged individuals, victims of domestic violence, stranded travelers in need of transportation to other location during times of distress, families' stress, personal stress. Although it's not comprehensive, some of the example issues could be domestic violence, experiencing a major medical crisis, job loss, homelessness, and that's just a couple of samples. It doesn't mean that it could be other things. Again, what happens, and I'll ask Paul to discuss a little bit more, because of, what he's, what he's going to do is actually discuss with a person applying. His staff will determine whether or not they're eligible based on the criteria he will use. This project's a $5,000 project with a 50-50 match, 2,500 from DOT, and we have it in the budget for the other 2,500. So Paul, if you could, please.
Our office, I'm the Director of Social Services, our office came up with a simple application if we were fortunate to get this grant. Basically, like today, we had a situation where there was a couple traveling from Florida up to Connecticut today. Their car broke down in Dunn, and basically they were homeless. They, I think they reached out to Des Ray, was it not? And, you know, we referred them to community action because we don't have any funds or anything right now to actually assist them with. But in the past, we've had, maybe we would have an adult protective services report where we have an elderly individual or somebody that's maybe being exploited, and then they might have family that's just in another county or another state. Then we would send a social worker out to that home to assess the situation, to see if that individual actually needs, you know, to be transferred to another state or another county. This would be a one-time assistance program. We would also see what access, or if they had any access to any funds before we would use this. So this does not always mean that just because we get a call, we're going to help someone. We'd do some social work on it, we would assess the situation. Like I said, it'd be a one-time assistance. If they did meet the criteria, which is based on need, it's not based on income, because there are times we run across someone that may be in a domestic situation. You know, they may be over a so-called income scale, but they may not have access to those funds due to whatever situation they're having between their spouse or whatever. But we would assess the situation, we would contact family in wherever they wanted to go to see if they would be able to receive that individual. If they would, and they said they had a place to stay, then we would try to get them the cheapest mode of transportation, whether it's a bus ticket, train ticket, sometimes a flight might be cheaper. But then we would fill out this application, we would scan it into our compass system, so we would make sure that it's not a repetitive application that they're trying to apply for. It's a one-time assistance, and then we would, if we needed to transport them to the bus station in Fayetteville, the train station in Fayetteville, carry, you know, we would assist them with that. I would say pre-COVID, we had more and more people that, or maybe towns, police departments sometimes would contact us to say they wanted someone to come out and assess the situation. Today, I think with Des Ray being contacted, was the first time probably in the last six, eight months that I actually remember. But we also work with SAFE. Sometimes SAFE has domestic situations that they need someone to come in and see if they could transport someone or get them to a safer environment. So, you know, I just, I just want to say, just because someone calls and says they have a need, we're going to do social work, we're going to assess the situation, we're wanting to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and we'll definitely keep a list in our system to make sure it's not a repetitive thing, and it is a one-time assistance. Do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With this money to assist the need of a stranded individual, I know you have here that, that domestic violence would be considered, whatever, that a girl would be funded this funding. And will this funding be only for Harnett County citizens, or will it spread out to other counties?
Well, it's my understanding, Barry, you correct me if I'm wrong, it's for individual, like, we've had situations where, we've had individuals that are stranded in Dunn. Sometimes individuals walking up and down 95, they end up in the hospital. We had an individual during COVID, he had some early Alzheimer's, ended up in Betsy Johnson, I mean, Good Hope, no, excuse me, Betsy Johnson, and he had family in Tennessee, but we had no finances to actually get him to Tennessee. So this is for individuals that are in crisis, not necessarily always county residents.
Well, who's going to be over screening applications, making the decision for these people?
It would be our social workers that go out in the field, and they have access to a supervisor or a program manager. These are social workers that make home visits and deal with situations like this, or it would be our intake worker in children's services or adult services if the individual comes to the office or if they find their way to the office.
Okay. All right. Perfect example happened this morning right up here around the corner, at Dr. D. Austin's office. Had a gentleman who'd been arrested. Now he'd bond, didn't have any way to go, now he's piled up on a sidewalk around there sleeping at night. Can we use that money to relocate him if he's willing to go?
I would say if he had a place to go, what we would do, we would interview this individual, we would get name and number of who, you know, he says he might have a son or a daughter or a brother, somebody in Charlotte. We would make contact with that individual, see if they're able to safely receive him, if he has a place to stay, because we do not want to see him, you know, back here because it is a one-time assistance deal. I would say if he had a place to go, what we would do, we would interview this individual. We would get name and number of who, you know, he says he might have a son or a daughter or a brother, somebody in Charlotte. We would make contact with that individual, see if they're able to safely receive him if he has a place to stay, because we do not want to see him, you know, back here because it is a one-time assistance deal.
My understanding is he was wandering through Harnett County and managed to get himself arrested, and now he's out and he's got no way to go, and he's just piling up in the Chopsticks Restaurant. He was asleep, rolled up against their front door when I went over there this morning.
But I would say, you know, if he can give us information of where he needs to go, and there's somebody there, a family member, somebody to receive him, I would think we could definitely use this. Yes, sir.
It's negligible cost for the grant, so.
Sure. A bus ticket's a whole lot cheaper than 10 or 15 calls for him for vacancies. And he's living a whole lot better if you get him back wherever he came from.
I mean, you know, DSS, our number one thing is to make sure that, first, Harnett County citizens are safe, but also individuals in need. And I know I've worked with Mr. Trout, and we've got some situations in our budget this year to where we have, because individuals have stayed in the county, we have eventually become their guardian, and that can be a long-term cost to the county. So if we can help them get to a safer environment where they have family members to look after them, you know, let's try that before it becomes a guardianship case for DSS.
At least you would have an organized plan. I know from experience when I was working, there's several I sent to Raleigh from Irwin when I was chief over there, had an officer living up that way, and told them to flag down the first blue and white patrol car they found because they had shelters and things where they could get out of the weather. But we've also gone as far with Mayor Baker's permission, we bought them a bus ticket to Key West, Florida, because that's where they wanted to go. And rather than answer 10 calls for vacancies, you know, like that, that was the cheapest way we could go.
And back in the day when I was a social worker, we had the assistance of the Dunn Ministerial Association. I've asked my staff to look and see if that still existed today, and as of today, they didn't have an answer to that. But they used to, Archie Wood and all used to assist us with bus tickets, but those were mainly individuals in Dunn. So this would help individuals throughout the county.
Sure.
Additional questions?
Other questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make sure that we take care of our own citizens, you know. They could spread it out. I don't mind that, you know, but make sure we take care of our own citizens here in this county. That's my main concern, because I have homeless people calling me. I have had some home people calling me, they didn't have anywhere to go. But now under this program, we would have some, I could send them to someone. Okay, I'll go along with it.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the plan here with the, that's the name so long, I don't really know.
I have a motion and a second to approve the FY 24 Travelers Aid Program grant.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
I do have one question. The matching $2,500, where would that come from?
It's coming out of our budget, Harts budget.
You may have said that, and I may have missed that. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. County mayors report, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Chair. You see a number of reports that were provided in your packet. I do need a motion to approve budgets as requested by the finance director, and also a separate motion to approve tax rebates, refunds, and releases as requested by the tax administrator.
Motion to approve amendments recommended by the finance director. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to approve budget amendments requested by the finance director. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Please unanimously.
Motion to approve tax rebates, refunds, and releases as requested by the tax administrator.
Chair will second for discussion. I have a motion and a second to approve tax rebates, refunds, and releases as requested by the tax administrator. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Please unanimously, Madam Clerk. Item 10, remove from table nomination regarding nonprofit committee.
Mr. Chairman, in our last meeting, I made a motion to table this indefinitely. We were missing one of our commissioners, and the nonprofit committee has basically been extinct for a couple of years. That being said, I make a motion that we remove it from the table for further discussion.
I have a motion to, I have a motion and a second to remove a table nomination regarding the nonprofit committee. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's off the table. We'll move on to new business. Discuss a request regarding Buddy Barefoot, Buddy Barefoot Road.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. I've heard by one of the public comments, so presented statute 136-63, citizens may on petition can request the NC DOT to change or abandon any road on the secondary road system when the best interest of the people of the county be served thereby. And so the NC DOT did receive a petition to abandon SR 2049, which is Buddy Barefoot Road, from the state secondary road system. NC DOT reviewed it and did recommend the abandonment of the road. The county did review this. There are some concerns with abandoning this road for multiple reasons. This road, there's not a lot of connectivity between Bethel Baptist Road and Shady Grove Grove Road. You have to go to either west towards 210 or further east to Ellie Bridge Road. So because of lack of connectivity is a concern from EMS standpoint, if the road was to be repaired, I do understand that the road's been barricaded all for a number of years now because part of it's been washed out. But DOT could repair it. It does provide important connectivity between those two roads from EMS standpoint and also from a development standpoint in the future to be able to connect those two roads. So what's been proposed to you all is a resolution to oppose the abandonment and to request that the NC DOT make the necessary repairs to the road so it can be reopened. But again, that would be the board's decision whether you want to support the abandonment, but it does require a resolution by the board to abandon for them to move forward with it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we have staff prepare a resolution in support of reopening Buddy Barefoot Road. It is essential in that community down there. Folks have to go six, seven miles out of their way along with emergency services, and I know because I worked that area for many years as a deputy. And I think DOT needs to get back in gear and get the road back open for the citizens down there to pay taxes, to keep those roads open. And I'll put that in the form of a motion, sir.
Mr. Chairman, in light of information that was brought to our attention tonight, I make a motion that this be tabled until our August 1st work session.
I motion the table until our August 1st work session.
What's happening?
I have a motion and a second in order to table this until our August work session. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's table it until our August 1st work session.
I would like to have some answers on, why would DOT want to abandon the road? Because I don't see nothing in here that tells me why.
I can answer that. According to Richie Hines, paving dirt roads like this one, we'll probably get the 401 bypass completed before we get this road paved. And the 401 bypass is on the 2050 MTP.
Well, I agree with, we need to discuss and get more details before we agree to abandon a road here that DOT is responsible for upkeep, because it's so hard for the citizens in this county, as well as us, to get DOT to even accept taking care of a road. So I agree with, I agree.
You also understand that we've got a major sewer main that runs right down beside that road.
Yes.
Headed to the plant over there on Shady Grove, so we need to be able to access.
Moving on, consider appointment of a member to the Sand Hills Board of Directors. You want to take that one?
I can. Chairman brought to me the need to make an appointment to the Sand Hills Center for Board of Directors. An individual was found that meets the requirements. We know it was Representative Howard Penny. He meets the qualifications related to family members that have disability, and so he's a good fit. Legal has gone through and looked at both the statute and the bylaws to determine if an elected official can serve on this board, and their review says that he can serve on both boards. So he is an acceptable candidate for approval to this board.
That forms a motion. Please appoint Representative.
Are you submitting his name?
Correct. He has actually filed an application as well that's included in the packet.
The chair will second for discussion. I have a motion and a second in order to accept Representative Howard Penny to the Sand Hills Board of Directors. I'd like to say something on this quick. We ended up losing, we had a resignation a few months back for this position from the Sand Hill Center. Right now, there's a lot of, a lot of rumors, a lot of things going on in legislature where they're trying to get some of these LME MCOs in order to merge together. And I think right now, since Representative Penny has previously sat on this board, it would have helped me, who also sits on that board as a director, in future things down the road. So I would appreciate the consideration for this. Any other discussion?
Yep, Harnett County, that's the most important thing. Every now and then, counting the people here in this county, that's the most important thing, and I consider him a great candidate because I know he understands the need.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please unanimously, Madam Clerk. A few, or here we have a need for a closed session?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move the board go into closed session for the following purpose, to discuss certain economic development matters. This motion is made pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318 dot 11A4.
Second. I have a motion and a second to go into closed session to discuss economic development matters. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session.
Second, I have a motion and a second to go into closed session to discuss economic development matters. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session.